Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, May 8th, 2018 School Committee Meeting here at Tinsborough High School. It is 6:30. I call this meeting to order. I will start by introductions. Ms. Fairbanks?
Chair Fairbanks. Ms. McStitchy?
Good evening, Mike Moran.
Good evening, Mark Branko, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Anthony Finnerella.
Robert Mullin.
Ryan McMahon.
Hemi Pizursky.
Derek Piper, Director of Technology.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
Corey O'Neal, Senior Representative.
Thank you, everybody. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, if I could get a motion to approve the April 24 School Committee Meeting Minutes and Executive Session Minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'd also like to add to that, the April 24 Technology Subcommittee Meetings, Executive Session Minutes will not be released at this time. Could we amend that motion?
I will amend that motion.
Second. Any further discussion? No. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That carries 6-0-0. Correspondents?
None at this time, Mr. Chair.
Visitors, comments, and questions? Seeing none. Subcommittee update, Policy Subcommittee?
Share the success.
Oh, I'm sorry, share the success. Wow, right by course.
You better have something to say now.
I've already got you graduated.
And this is his, is this his last one? No, he's got one more, right?
One more.
Yep. Alright, district-wide, Tinsborough Public Schools is celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week for our very dedicated and hard-working teachers. And Special Olympians from all three schools participate in the Special Olympics at Pittsburgh State. At Elementary School, the TES Councilors have partnered with some local STEM summer camps in a hope some students can participate in this upcoming field this summer. And third graders travel to Concord on a field trip to learn about the American Revolution. At the Middle School, the Museum of Science had an in-house field trip to the eighth grade about temperature and heat. The middle school and high school robotics team, a first-year program, had a great competition at U Lowell two weekends ago. They placed fourth out of 18 teams. At the high school, the annual spring art show was underway at the library. It showcases all the best works high school students have produced this year. And congratulations to former head football coach, Mr. John Kierakopoulos, as he was recently inducted into the Massachusetts High School Football Hall of Fame. And the high school administration encourages parents to attend a discussion about class rank tomorrow night, 7:00 PM, at the school. That's all.
Mr. Chair, I can, just so you know, as, next meeting will be Cory's last meeting, and it'll actually be a transition meeting. I know that Mr. Ogden started the process of looking for a replacement, though we all think you're irreplaceable, Cory. We do need somebody in the seat for next year, so next meeting, we'll have Cory and his replacement in, at this meeting.
You know Cory, he says that every year to us.
Yeah. Actually, I'm not graduating, so.
I skipped right by here. That's how important you are to me, Cory. And, but if I could add to what Cory said, I actually went to the robotics thing at UMass Lowell. It was really cool. Adam Bovek, Mr. Bovek, and his team just did a great job with that program. The kids were wicked excited. I'd never been to anything like that. Principal Ogden showed up and was there for a little while, so it was really a cool event, and I look forward to it continuing for years to come. But, alright, if you're done, I can move on to Subcommittee.
Yeah.
The Policies Subcommittee, next night, I review proposed changes to Policy 10.3, which is a physical restraint of students. This policy is being updated based on recommendations that came from a coordinated permanent review. Sarah Lewandowski sent the draft to, Lewandowski, sent the draft to CPR Co-Chair Matt Nixon for his review. The district will need to submit these changes as part of our June 14 Corrective Act of Action Report. The proposed draft is located in the 5818 Policy Subcommittee for your review. The policy will be on the agenda for our next review as a first read.
Alright, thank you. Personnel.
We have three notifications tonight. We first have two resignations, both Debbie Huston and Suzanne Marquez from the Elementary School Daycare Program, which we know is closing at the end of this year. And the other one is, it's a sad one. Notice, notification at 10:00, it was Sandy Cassidy. Mrs. Cassidy has been teaching art in Tinsborough for 35 years and is a staple in this district and just a great, great educator and a great person who has a lot of positive influence on our students, so we're certainly gonna miss Sandy, but we wish her the best of luck in retirement.
She's also, to add to that, part of Camp Barn Dale. She was, been a big part of that for a lot of years. I've been there twice with two of my kids, so she definitely will be missed. And she, like you said, she's been in that middle school for a long time.
Yep.
So, congratulations to Mrs. Cassidy, and good luck to our other two resignations. Unfinished business.
We have a first read of Policy 8.1 Athletic Handbook. Tonight, we have a first read of the policy. The proposed draft is available in your review, for your review and drive. There are two changes to this policy. First is that the handbook itself will no longer be part of the policy. This change is consistent with Policy 1.8, 1.28 regarding school handbooks. The second change is that the school committee will review and approve the athletic handbook annually. This policy will be on the agenda for our next meeting as a second read. We need a motion to approve Policy 8.1 as a first read.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That carries 6-0-0. Thank you. Valley Leasings Update.
Mr. Chair, just wanted to provide the community with an overview as to where we are with the leasing of the Lakeview School. As you know, we've had preliminary discussions about the great tremendous partnership we have with Valley Collaborative, and there was a desire on this committee's part to extend the lease to a 10-year lease at the Lakeview School. So, what I put into your drive is the new contract language that was vetted by our attorneys that reflects 10-year lease agreement with Valley Collaborative, with the caveat that they would, they would kick in, for lack of a better term, $800,000, as would we, from the lease revenue, to upgrade HVAC windows and other capital projects at the Lakeview School. So, this is really a win-win for the community in that the school keeps, we keep, first and foremost, the school inhabited. Secondly, we, we gets a little bit of revenue off of the lease. And third, we're going to improve an existing facility that would otherwise be run down. So, so it's a great, it's a great possibility for us here. Two caveats I need to talk about. One of the things that you'll see, if you could, we compare this lease with our old lease, is in a conversation today with Dr. Scott, she really would like to take the custodial services in-house and take that off of our payroll. So, that is something that we're going to reflect in the, in the lease. The other piece that we had a conversation about today was really her desire to have some kind of presence with the School Resource Officer at Valley Collaborative. And as we've talked about this over the past month, as we get a full-time School Resource Officer for the Tinsborough Public Schools, we do consider Valley to be one of our schools, so, so that was a natural progression for that. So, it's a good lease, it, it makes sense, it's good, good for everyone, it's a win-win for Valley and the community of Tinsborough. So, feel free to, to review that lease, if you have any questions or, or comments, please let me know. But, we're in the preliminary stages of going back and forth right now with, with the Valley Board of Directors, who also gave preliminary approval for this. So, I don't seek for seeing headaches down the road. I think we're a matter of a few weeks away from putting pen to paper and making this a reality, so I just wanted to provide that overview, let it one note, it's still on our radar.
Alright, very good, thank you. New business. Bring Your Own Device.
Mr. Chair, as you know, Mr. Piper has been working with the Technology Subcommittee, and, and the bulk of the meeting tonight is really this initiative. And I know that, I just want to, I want to applaud Derek's effort. Derek and his team have worked very hard to, to really think this through and provide a thoughtful approach on how we can integrate and implement more technology than Tinsborough Public Schools. So, I don't want to steal any of your thunder or any of your lies, Derek, so I'm gonna turn it over to you at this point.
Alright, thank you. So, BYOD Learning Initiative, as Dr. Flanagan said, you know, when I started here, I saw this motto, preparing students for our global future, and we live that every day here, and the teachers live that every day here. Along with that comes 21st century skills, that we've all heard so much about, communication, collaboration, problem-solving, and a lot of this is college and career readiness skills, which we know, technology has a huge impact in getting students ready for their future and for college. With that said, we're already doing a lot of this, so this isn't anything new here at Tinsborough High School. We have students using technology every day. We did a survey to teachers, 100% of the teachers at, almost 100% of teachers at Tinsborough High School are using technology. 85% of those teachers are using it at least once a week, many more than once a week. Google Classroom and our Google Apps for Education is our cloud-based system. Right now, we have over 50 teachers, 130 classes, and 1,000 students district-wide that are partaking on online workflows through Google Classroom. So, we're doing great things here with technology. The slight problem comes with the abundance of technology. So, especially at the Tinsborough High School, we have limited numbers of shared carts, we have a couple of computer labs, and it's a little frustrating because teachers have to often schedule labs and, and these resources weeks in advance. So, what many schools in the district, not the district, in our surrounding areas in the country are doing is a Bring Your Own Device initiative, which is simply students bringing their own device to school. We did a survey back in January of parents, students, and teachers, and we found that 85% of those parents that responded fully support BYOD, 9% needed more information, but were open to the idea, or just needed more information. Students was a little higher, and teachers were overwhelmingly in support of Bring Your Own Device initiative. In your drive, I did put a letter that we would like to send out when I'm here tonight, really for us to get your support, hopefully, for this initiative and your approval. This letter that we drafted, reviewed the overviews and the goals of the initiative, which I'm not gonna read through it for you, but it's a very, very well-laid-out plan, and also gives the families the options for devices. So, the two options are students can bring their own device, and we do list some minimum specifications for devices for various reasons. We've created an information site, which I'll show you in a few slides, that lays out all of the frequently asked questions and device recommendations. Now, we do know that not everyone has a device, although 65% of the families that we hold did say they have a device that meets these minimum requirements. We do know there's families that are going to have economic needs or other needs. We have budgeted, we have set aside the devices that are currently in the, at the high school here for the free, reduced eligible families to have those devices. We also have, you know, funds available if needed for more devices, that we don't, doing the numbers, we don't foresee that that will be an issue as well. Next steps in the letter just kind of go throughout our plan. So, again, I talked about the information site, which I'll show you. We are planning to have parent information nights because we know there will be more questions and maybe art answered. In our FAQs, we're looking to schedule some vendors, some vendor fairs to come in. So, devices range from Chromebooks, you know, we lay this out in our device requirements page. Chromebooks are very affordable devices for, for most families and do the job that we need them to do at the high school. As does a $2,000 MacBook, which is probably overkill, but again, it's a personal decision for those families, what device is best for their student. Juniors and seniors, if they're going into college, they may want to look on the high end of a device and carry that with them into college. Likewise, a student who's into video production or coding, a Chromebook may be a little, you know, not enough for them. They may want a different device as well. So, those vendor fairs, I think, will help answer a lot of questions as well, and hopefully we can partner with some vendors to get some discounts on devices as well for our families. In July, so once we move through all this informational phase and, and this is out there, in July, we're going to survey the families and ask them what option they're choosing, what kind of device their students bringing with them to ninth through 12th grade. So, then that'll help us on our end to then, again, budget for those families that need help, so we can have the devices ready for them. So, we did build a mock-up website. Of course, it's a work in progress, but as of now, oops, go back. Forward. It'll kick me to the live one. So, this will kick me to the live one. So, we'll have an informational site for parents to go to. Again, we list out the goals of the program, and we have frequently asked questions currently, device requirements. This is where we'll put digital citizenship links and resources, because that is also a huge part of this program. It's not just about devices and getting devices in the school, again, it's teaching them how to go into the future using those devices in a responsible way. So, digital citizenship is baked into everything we do here. And again, just an example, frequently asked questions is a indexed list of questions, and we'll be adding to this as questions come up. Everything about security, which parents had asked on the survey, to, you know, what if I can't afford, afford a device? Can we print? I believe the documents that I put in your drive links to these as well, so you can be able to see those. So, I want to open it up now for discussion, because I want you to have very quickly. So, they could open up for discussion, questions?
And I think you did, you did a lot of research to make that FAQ page as exhaustive as possible. I mean, Derek and Mark and I spent an hour the other day just saying, oh, what about this, but what about that, but what about this? And the list began to grow and grow, so it truly is a work in progress. The other thing that I like on that page itself is, as we start talking about policies regarding technology, that'll be another place, a resource that we can have it right there. These are our tech policies, and these are our tech expectations. So, I think philosophically, you know, this district is ready, it's ready to take off, and I think we're ready to do this, and I believe this will be great for our kids, it'll be great for our classroom teachers. And, and I know that, you know, with over 85% of the parents saying we're on board, and 95% of the teachers saying, please, let's do this, this is the right move for Tinsborough. So, not to stay thunder.
No, and one more statistic, which I forgot to add, was that teachers are having students use their technology already. So, this isn't a brand-new surprise, everyone can use their own technology. A lot of teachers are having students use phones for a quick formative assessment at the end of class to, to gauge their learning, to see if there's any further questions. Students are in the library with their own computers and MacBooks. And on the infrastructure side, we've also done a ton of work getting ready for this with our wireless, and this summer, we're implementing a new security firewall, and students will be logging on with their Google accounts, so we can really work with students to, to, to make this really a success.
The last, that's, that is, last week, we had the opportunity to meet with the EFT Education Foundation of Tinsborough, and 90% of the grant requests were for Chromebooks from our teachers. So, they're all dying for the technology in their classrooms, so this will certainly help us address that as well. So, that being said, we'd love to hear some questions from the committee or answer any questions we can.
From other districts that have this, have they given us any feedback as to any of the issues they've had and how they've addressed them?
Yeah, actually, a lot of our FAQs have come from other districts, and you can imagine all, a lot of the questions are similar for parents. Some of the issues are around breakage, you know, irresponsible use, mistakes being made, and I think we have a good plan to deal with all of those.
I'll sign up.
I have a couple of questions. Two questions I have. One is, the July survey is, you know how people are on vacation, they get emails, they may not reply, so is there, you know, someone going to consciously chase down that data for that, because?
So, we had that conversation in our meeting the other day, that, that after this goes through, that timeline could be shifted, maybe it happens in June, but June is quite often miserable for our families too, because we're all in that rat race to close out and get ready for the summer. So, we did talk about how someone will have to do a follow-up check, check the spreadsheet, send out a reminder email, and then if we still are hearing crickets on a, of certain families, we're just gonna make calls and make sure that gets done.
The other one is, if those families who may be on the free review line, it's called out there, is there a way to ensure that your communication is, is put to those families? So, we're actually making sure that they have a device in hand, so?
Yes, so we're working with the central office staff to make sure we have a clean list. That list will, it, it's very fluid, quite honestly, based on family needs, and we'll make sure we're working with central office staff to keep on top of that list and come up with respectful ways of making sure that we're reaching out to families.
Exactly, that's all I was concerned about.
And it happens for anyone else who comes in with economic hardship, you know, if someone loses their job, or parents lose their job, they can reach out to us and we'll certainly work with them. We've always done that, and I think that's, you know, that's one of the best things about our community, is we take care of each other. We would never have a kid on the other side, we would always take care of our kids.
I thought it was a fantastic job, thank you, Derek.
Maybe a couple years down the road with the BYOD, is that like, you ever think, like, the Chromebook carts here, if almost 100% have that, it would be pushed down to the other schools, and almost no carts left at the high school, and all down other schools?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, this opens up the door for using those resources. Like Dr. Flanagan said, the EFT grant request for, for Chromebook carts overwhelmingly at the high school, because the high school has the least technology of our three schools right now. So, exactly, so if we have students with their own devices or district-supplied devices, we're basically one-to-one, we are one-to-one at that point with devices, carts would, you know, go away. We're always gonna need to have a, a supply here for students who forget devices, students whose devices break, and, you know, they can't go out and buy a new one, they need to borrow one, but absolutely, yeah, and it opens up the door for the other schools to benefit from this.
When we look at these devices as a learning tool, right? No different than your textbook or any resource in the class. So, if you show up and you happen to forget it that day, you can't just sit there, you know, if it was a textbook, you'd be handed a textbook, or anything, you'd borrow a pencil from someone. So, in this case, it would be, it would be a school device. So, we'll have to have some for that purpose, but it will, it will really help with redeployment across the district and other places.
I really like how Derek addressed, addressing parents on this. You know, if I have a son or daughter that's gonna be a junior or senior, and they're thinking about a four-year college, well, that four-year college is gonna require some kind of laptop beyond, beefier than a Chromebook. So, I may want to make the investment now, as a junior, senior, that, you know what? I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the leap for a MacBook or, or Windows, whatever. So, I, I think, you know, the more we get the vendors accessible to parents and bring parents in to have them think through the decision, so they're not buying a Chromebook and a year later saying, I need a MacBook.
Does the Vote Cap, Bring Your Own Device program, or do any of the other schools in Tinsborough currently?
Yeah, Innovation Academy has a BYOD 4, 9 through 12 required.
And a lot of districts are one-to-one, so that, can you just talk about the difference between a one-to-one school and a BYOD school?
Sure, it's confusing language. So, one-to-one really means one device for every student. A lot of times, when people talk about one-to-one, it's district-provided devices, so the district pays for those devices, they're, you know, on loan to students, the district's responsible for those. BYOD gets us to one-to-one, one device for every child, but it's mainly student-supplied devices. Does that make sense?
That makes perfect sense. So, I know a lot of schools, the, the trend was years ago, right, every school was, was supplying iPads to kids, and we just found those aren't as functional, and that, those schools are finding that as well. So, the Chromebook is, is a, is a perfect alternative to getting technology in kids' hands where they can access Google Classroom. And, and again, back to the Google Classroom slide, our teachers are doing so much in Google Classroom, it's becoming a necessity if these kids have technology in their hands.
And interestingly, I just had a meeting around curriculum with Krista Maraca today at the elementary school, talking about all the great things our kids are doing down at that level, learning everything from keyboarding skills to drop-and-drag to file storage, and then jumping into the maker space to apply their knowledge. And so, we talked about, when you talk about the parameters around the required devices and recommended devices, to have those keyboards and to have a particular type of device is important for our kids to be sort of uniform in their learning in the classroom, so you don't have some kids doing the touchscreen and some doing the keyboarding. We do think there are certain skills, digital literacy skills, that need to transfer, so by the time they come through our school district, they've, they've acquired those real clearly.
I just want to say, it must be overwhelming trying to tackle this at first, how many different variations of implementing this process there is. I think you've done a great job of boiling it down to a very clear, concise plan, especially with all the FAQs. It's very easy to go in and understand what the expectation is.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Julie?
So, I think, Mr. Chair, we would just look for a motion of vote of support to say, go forward with the BYOD initiative at Tinsborough High School.
I would like to make the motion to support the BYOD initiative and to move forward.
One second. Any more to second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That carries six here as well. Thanks, Peter Piper, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Derek, thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Alright, good job. Now, how are we gonna pay for it? Finance!
Wipe the tears out of the corner of my eyes before we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had 10 warrants of bills presented to the committee tonight. All have been returned to me, signed. In your drive is a list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts for the bills, for signing of payroll. In your drive are two payrolls that are there for your information since the last time we had payroll on there. Again, warrant numbers and amounts there for you. And just as an other, in terms of the solar agreement that is between your council's office and Select Energy, I was fortunate enough to reach out to one of Mike Long's attorneys, who seems very eager to get right on this for us. And I just checked my email, she actually has a conference call with Select Energy and Power Options at 11:00 on Thursday morning. So, hopefully, we'll have a document that's fully vetted by your attorneys that we can have you approve and move forward in the project.
And what's our deadline for getting that approved, so we can get it done this summer?
I haven't heard from Select that it's an issue yet.
Yeah, okay.
He did call me Monday, or, Monday, Monday, I believe it was, and, or Friday, I'm sorry, and just asked what's going on, where are we going, and I spoke to the superintendent and said?
He's anxious.
And said, well, maybe I could reach out to somebody else in Mike's office, just to try to move the project along. So, I did, I did reach out to Leslie Carey in his office, and she got right back to me, she got back to Select this morning, and, you know, he hasn't said we're past that drop-dead yet, date yet. So, I'm hoping that we get a document that you can approve and we can move forward, certainly by the 22nd, hopefully sooner. And that's it.
Alright, very good. School Committee Discussion. How was that?
Nothing else to say?
Ms. Fairbanks?
I want to say thank you.
Professor Moran? It's getting to look like graduations upon us. Don't forget to keep those grades up, seniors. They count, though. I could even tell.
I'm good, thank you.
You have nothing else to say, Mr. O'Neil?
I'd just like to say I'm excited for the BYOD next year. As a student, I see, you know, just having a laptop in class, I have 10 minutes left of class, we stopped a little early, but hey, I can start my paper if I have it right there, instead of going down the library, so, just a situation like that, I think it's gonna be a big improvement.
Great. We can hold you back here if you'd like.
Yeah.
Enjoy the program.
No, no, really. She has a success got to watch.
Mr. Messina?
I'm all set tonight, thank you.
Mr. Piper, anything else?
Thank you.
I'm all set, thanks.
I'm eagerly awaiting the results of tonight's election, hoping Rob, Tony, Mike do well.
Thank you.
I'm pulling for you guys. Derek, thanks again, great job.
It's a tight race. I would like to say thank you to everyone who came out and voted today, and thank you very much for your support from the three of us. We greatly appreciate it. We come out here every other week and try to do the best for the schools and our kids, and it's a pleasure to represent all of you.
It's a pleasure for me to do it. Why?
Yeah.
Moving on. Moving on.
I'll just say that I do, I do want to recognize that this week, particularly today, is National Teacher Appreciation Day, and we just want to, you know, publicly say that we are so proud of the dedicated professionals we have in our district. Our teachers work tirelessly for our kids, and, and just so happy today, and so thankful to have an incredible staff and be part of such a great learning community. So, thank you to our teachers and all support staff, everything you do, it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you. I also would like to thank everyone for coming out and voting tonight, and for everybody who actually ran for office, thank you for doing so. Most of them are in voluntary positions, so it's, it's nice that people are willing to give their time, so thank you to them. We do have a need for Executive Session this evening to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body as declared by the chair. We will return from Executive Session only to adjoint our regularly scheduled meeting, and this does require a roll-call vote, so get the motion.
I'd make the motion and go to Executive Session.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
In favor? In favor?
In favor?
In favor?
Don't look at me like that.
In favor.
We are in Executive Session, thank you and good night.